All right, you guys ready?
You got it.
Today is Tuesday, July 5th, and this is our reorganizational regular meeting. We're calling to order. We have a tobacco policy in place. There's no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will now take roll call. Trustee Sherry. Trustee Story.
Here.
Trustee Bishop.
Present.
Trustee Wallace.
Here.
I, Amanda Gates, the district clerk, will administer the oath of office to the board trustees as followed. Sarah Hemingway Lynch.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees for the rest of your life?
Megan Ramondo. I will now call for nominations of the board president. The Board of Education hereby nominates.
Amanda, I would like to nominate our trustee Emily Sherry for president.
Do I have a first?
Yeah.
Oh. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Any comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Do we have nominations for the vice president? No, you don't say anything. Okay, I would like to nominate trustee Bishop for vice president.
I will second.
All in favor? Any comments? Anyone? No?
I will administer the oath of office to the president and the vice president.
Okay, moving on to item six, annual appointments. The Board of Education hereby approves the appointments of district officers, stipends fees effective July 1st, 2022, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign all necessary contracts. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, and a second. Trustee Ramondo. Any comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 6.02, the Board of Education hereby approves other appointments and stipends fees listed effective July 1st, 2022, as well as resolutions on independent contract retainers and authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign all necessary contracts. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Bishop, any comments?
I can now.
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Do I need to read? No, right, okay. Item seven, the Board hereby authorizes payroll certificate, budget transfers, check signature, alternate check signature, petty cash funds, bonding of personnel. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, a second. Trustee Ramondo, thank you, any comments?
We're having a hard time, we can't hear what you're saying.
You guys can't hear me?
No, we can't. We have the thing over here. But we can't hear anything.
Is John, is John here? Hello? Can you hear me now?
A little better.
A little better. Echo. Would you like me to read item seven again?
Sure.
Can you hear me though? No. John, to the rescue. Testing. Yeah, we can. Don't slowly. That's not easy for me, Sarah. Megan's lonely over there.
I am lonely over here.
Yeah, it's not.
It's okay.
It is lonely over here.
Maybe, if, you can hear me, right, Steph? Mostly?
I can.
He's, okay. Are we ready to? Can you guys hear me better now? Yeah? Okay, item 7.02. The Board hereby authorizes official bank depositories, official newspaper for legal notices and bids, board meeting schedule. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop, any comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 8.02, insurance carriers. Be it resolved that the Board hereby confirms and gives notice that on the date of this resolution, the carrier for the district's umbrella, general liability and basic educational liability policy is Utica National. The carrier for the district's commercial property policy is Utica National, and the district's insurance broker is the Reese Group. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, and a second. Trustee Story. Any comments? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Emily, I'm sorry, did we miss 8.01? And then we missed 8.01?
Yeah.
Okay. Superintendent McLaren pointed out that on item 7.02, we need to have a little bit of a discussion about the board meeting schedule. Trustee Bishop had brought up at our last meeting that we may want to consider meeting schedule in November and December, and whether or not that those, that we need two meetings in each of those months. If I remember correctly, trustee Story and I both felt like they should remain on the calendar and that we would give ourselves a little flexibility in there if we were able to do that, but that we wanted to wait until those meetings actually came up to see what was happening before we made a definitive decision. Does anybody have a position on that?
I just would. Testing? Oh, there we are. Hi.
Hi, David.
I would say that it sounds totally feasible to wait, and that said, if there is an option to, to maybe cancel one of those meetings during the holiday season, I think that would be a positive thing.
As I said last time, I'm concerned about students who have special ed, who are IEPs and 504s, because this is the time. You generally have a program review either five weeks into the school year or 10 weeks in. This is right around the 10 weeks in, and we would be, and essentially, you know, our special ed students who would need their programs changed. Hello? Wow. I think, what was I saying now? 10 weeks in with the, with program reviews, I think it's too, way too long not to have these meetings in there. And I think with having a brand-new board, with four brand-new trustees, we need, now it's gone out. Now, I, I think we need all the time to go over the stuff we need to do. So I think it's, we need to keep those.
I have one other item on the calendar. Spring break.
Want to explain it?
Sure. One other thing that we need to contemplate when creating the calendar, the first meeting in April right now is scheduled during spring break, and we try to avoid vacation breaks because people tend to go away, and then that would limit the public's ability to attend the meeting. So we need to still contemplate April. The 19th is a countywide date, and that's the only Wednesday that we have a meeting. So we could move the April 4th meeting to the following Tuesday, and then we would only have one week essentially between the first and second meeting of the month. But that's something we need to consider. The, the way the spring break fell this year makes it awkward. We don't normally have this issue.
I think it's necessary that we not have a meeting during spring break. Our administrators take that time off. It's one of the times they can take off. So I, let's, we need to move it off of spring break and do it the next week, and then we can ha, we have to meet that Wednesday night because that is a BOSI's budget that all Ulster County schools have to meet the same night and appoint or approve the BOSI's budget. So that's why that, we have that one Wednesday night meeting a year. But definitely get it out of spring break, because who knows if trustees will be here either.
So I think we're all in agreement that we should not have a meeting during spring break. Are we all comfortable having the back-to-back meetings in the month of April? Everyone's in agreement? Okay, so we can change that, Amanda. And I believe that we're all in agreement that we're going to leave the meetings in November and December, and if there's room for flexibility, we will discuss it at that point. Okay, 8.01. Nope. We're going to go back to item 8.01. The Board hereby authorizes mileage reimbursement, substitute teacher rates, substitute support staff rates, home instruction, teacher, use of facilities, school lunch prices, copy rate 2022-2023, board of registration. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Lynch, any comments?
Just a question, when will we go about the school lunch prices? Is that related to the COVID free lunch program?
It's not actually related necessarily to the COVID free lunch program. Right now, our K-6 meals will be free because we have a community eligibility provision, and that has to do with our poverty percentage. So Christine Downs, I did actually speak with her briefly this morning about our prices. She believes that we are likely to stay at the rate that we were at in the 1920 school year, which is $2.85 per meal, but we will definitely have a finalized rate on the August 2nd agenda.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, item 8.03, cell phone assignments. The Board of Education hereby approve the following cell phone assignments as below. May I have a first? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Hemingway Lynch, any comments?
What?
Trustee Story?
I see our medical directors on here, but she's only going to be here for a short time. So is it only for the one month that she's filling in?
We can amend it after she leaves, but we felt like it was important that she still be listed because for the month of July, she is going to remain our medical director.
Okay, so we're having trouble up here hearing one another. So I would just ask that for the next meeting, we either move to the floor or use a different space or different speakers so that everybody at the table can hear one another and we can communicate effectively, which is very important. So trustee Story, you were just saying that our medical director, Ms. Elmandorf, has been authorized a phone, however, she is only with us for the month of July. So that will be amended once Ms. Elmandorf is no longer with the district.
With that, second part of the question is, is the new medical director getting a school district cell? No?
So the new medical director will not be given a school district cellphone, and this will be amended after Ms. Elmandorf leaves. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Item nine, authorize district treasurer to borrow sums of money. Be it hereby resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education of the Ontario Central School District authorizes the district treasurer to borrow sums of money, the total of which is not to exceed $3 million at any one time during the 2022-2023 school year, and to issue appropriate short-term notes according to local finance law. May I have a first, please? Trustee Ramondo, second. David, thank you. Trustee Wallace, any comments or questions? No question, no comments? All those in favor? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Item 10, the Board of Education will discuss and establish board committees for the 2020-2022-2023. The Board of Education hereby approves the following temporary committees: Facilities Committee, Policy Committee, Health and Wellness Committee, Communications Committee, Legislative Action Committee. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Lynch, questions, comments? Trustee Story?
We forgot the most important, that the required one, audit committee is required.
I think that's actually why the board didn't, it wasn't on the list, because it's required. It's not up to the board to authorize it or not, I think. I can look back at prior agendas, but that's what the, when we were in agenda setting, that was the thought process.
All right, because I always remember being here, audit committee on. Because I always remember being here, Audit Committee on.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Would we like to discuss who would like to sit on these committees? I have some ideas, but I'd love to hear from everybody. Trustee Story?
We kind of can put into, or I would like to stay onto Facilities, but also for, you know, if other people want different things, figure out. But I don't want to stay on Audit Committee. In the past, we've put the newer people on Audit Committee, so I think it's better if we...
So...
Somebody else.
Yeah, I think, I'd love to see Trustee Bishop stay on that committee so that we do have a longer-term member on the Audit Committee, somebody who was there for the last year. Is there anybody else who would like to join, Trustee Bishop? Trustee Ramondo? We can have up to three. Would anybody else like to? We don't need three, but we can have up to three. Okay, so...
We should have at least two members on each.
At least two, up to three.
Because it's difficult, because I'm the only one on Facilities.
Well, I would like to join you there. So Val, David, and I, is there anybody else who... Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Can I just ask a question?
Of course.
Curious, how many committees would one trustee join?
It's really about your comfort level. You're required to join one. You don't have to join more than one, but we have a lot of committees, so it'd be great to spread the wealth. But you are only required to join one committee.
And then I could assume some of the differences between the Policy Committee and the Legislative Action Committee, but could you just say more about the mandate of each?
Yeah, Cindy, do you want to, because you were on Policy?
The Policy Committee is all about the district policies, the board policies that really govern the school district. The Legislative Action Committee, I can't really speak to too much, but I think that's something completely different.
So the Legislative Action Committee was formed in order to give the board a more organized voice with local government and with our county legislature, and also with New York State government. So the goal for that committee really was to have up to three members of the board who would advocate on behalf of the district for policy.
But that's also not, let's not get that confused with like the lobby days that NISBA does. There's a bunch of different stuff that the board does as a whole, that we lobby and go after or talk to our elected officials, but that's amongst, that's different than the Legislative and Action Committee.
So, yeah, just to...
And we've had that on and off over the years. We haven't always had that every single year.
I think a good example of what the Legislative Action Committee did this year, one of the things that the Legislative Action Committee did this year was kind of take, take a strong stand with the Ulster County Legislature when they were interested in potentially not renewing Officer Tom's contract. So as a member of that committee, I contacted Jonathan Hepner, Kevin contacted other people. There was a lot of work done to make sure that the students were signing petitions if they wanted to, and that there was action happening on behalf of the board and the district to make sure that we were in touch with the appropriate representatives, to make sure that Ontario was represented and our position was represented. So completely different than the NISBA days and the lobby days and the things like that that the board is encouraged to participate in. This is an actual committee that meets and takes action in a specific way.
Also, as a member of the Legislative Action Committee, Trustee Salem and I met with interim Superintendent Corsones and separately with Kevin Cahill, and also with Michelle Henchy.
Okay, and Policy Committee, Trustee Bishop, you'd like to stay on that, right? Sarah, I was thinking that might be something that you might enjoy. Do you have any interest? You can't hear me. Okay. David? You can hear me, okay. Sarah, I thought you might be interested in that committee, in the Policy Committee.
I am very interested. Thank you for thinking of me. I'm also very interested in the Legislative Action and Communications Committee, so I'm just concerned about my bandwidth, frankly. Do you have a recommendation about which one I should prioritize?
I think that the Policy Committee is where we need the, it is the more labor-intensive of the two, and I think it needs real priority. Priority. I think that there is a lot of work that Trustee Bishop and Trustee Osman were doing last year that frankly needs to continue, and we could have up to three board members if anyone else is interested. I mean, I think a third hand would lighten the load a lot, so if anybody else would like to join, that might make it more appealing to Sarah. Megan? Thank you, Meg. David, before Megan forces herself to do this, are you good with this, Megan? Okay. Okay, so then, Trustee Bishop, Trustee Lynch, and Trustee Ramondo. Next is the Health and Wellness Committee. Can you guys hear me at all? David can. Maybe I should turn my mic off. I mean, what?
Do we have to have the mics on for... We have to have the mics on. Is this a committee that, are we, do we even want to do it again? Because this is one, again, that has not been met or gone to for a long time.
Well, I think that Trustee Ramondo, that this is a powerful committee for Trustee Ramondo, and I also think that with the emphasis on mental health that we have going into 2022-23 school year, that this could be a very important committee. I'd really like to see it fly. That's your third? What's the audit? Yeah, okay. So you don't need to do that, Megan. Yes. Three is too much. So Health and Wellness. Do we have any volunteers for Health and Wellness? If we don't, then we will need to table it. Anybody want to be on the Health and Wellness Committee?
How often does the Health and Wellness Committee meet?
I'll tell you, it is very sporadic. I cannot tell you, prior to COVID, I can't tell you who even the board member was, because we didn't really use that. So, and it was more, I want to say around the Bel Air bash, like the meat-eating greet stuff, but that's, Chrissy Downs, the Director of Food Service, is the chair of this, but it wasn't one that was...
So maybe it's, maybe it's not a Board of Education Committee, but, you know, something that school personnel would attend.
I think it, years ago, it was an active committee when we were looking to sort of redefine the food that we were offering. It was a very large board initiative to not have high-fructose corn syrup. We really amended our food service program before a lot of the nutritional guidelines had been updated, so it hasn't been very active since then. We had some, for some reason, Trustee Fletcher, Tony Fletcher, was very, in my mind, very active when we were revising all of our nutrition guidelines, but since then, it has, as Trustee Story said, it's been very sporadic, and there hasn't been that much change happening.
Is it possible to have a, I saw in some of these other prepared notes that there was like a resident or a PTA person or a community member. Is there other folks that could help support the staff who are interested in revitalizing this committee?
I don't know if we had, when this was, as Superintendent McLaren, the board was different, and they were into this, and that was a focus on the school, and with this changing in the stuff. Now, there is not, there hasn't been, I think part of the problem is there isn't community support, and there hasn't been, you know, people coming to the meetings. So I think that's why it's kind of disbanded over the years.
If I could make a suggestion, maybe the suggestion would be to table this committee for now and then to revisit it in a few months and perhaps look at changing it to a Mental Health and Wellness Committee, because that is a huge initiative for the next school year, and the board may want to be involved in some way in doing something like that. But I think it sounds like everyone feels like we could table this committee for now and then look at how, the possibility of restructuring it moving forward. Does everyone agree?
I agree with tabling this, but I don't know if we would change it, what would the board have to do with a mental healthness, mental healthness, mental wellness committee type of thing? I don't understand what the board, board structure would have anything to do with that type of committee. That's something that would be more in, you know, if the administration want to do it. I don't see that as a board committee.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's any different than any of the other committees. I think that if the need identifies itself, and if it's something that Superintendent McLaren and her cabinet feel that the board should take an active role in, then we can revisit it at that time. So my suggestion would be to table it for now, to see if a need arises as we move through the next school year and we are able to evaluate. Mental health is no different than Health and Wellness. It's a very crucial part of the health and wellness of our students. So I'm just leaving it open. I'd like to leave it open, and we can revisit it. It doesn't have to be an official revisit on the agenda anytime soon, but I would like to leave the conversation open. If we need to form a committee, then we'll discuss it at that time.
But I'm just trying to make sure that this is something in the board's purview. That's what, I'm trying to make you, how, can you point out to me how that is in the board's purview of what we have to do fiduciary, you know, that's what I'm asking. I don't, I don't want to get the connection. I'm trying, that's...
I think that we could take a look at some past history, and when I was on the Health and Wellness Committee with Trustee Fletcher, and I believe Trustee McGillicuddy was on it as well, and Chrissy Downs was, and there were, there were a couple of teachers and community members who were on that committee at the time. It was a very active committee, but I'm talking about, you know, I believe Phyllis McGill was the superintendent at the time. But, you know, but that doesn't mean that the committee didn't keep going. I dropped out, you know, but I think that it is something we could take a look at if we table it now. I don't think we should just take it off the...
But I don't think that anyone's suggesting that the Board of Education would tell the district how to do their job. I think that, I think that the suggestion is that if there is a need identified by the administration and by the board, that we will revisit this and look at whether or not we need a Mental Health Committee or to continue the Health and Wellness Committee. As of right now, there does not seem to be a need. If that need is identified, then we will revisit it. I think that's a, fine. So, the Communications Committee. Trustee Wallace, thank you. I was hoping you'd say that.
I'd also like to join.
And the Legislative Action Committee. I would be interested in doing that. Is there anybody who'd like to join me? Yeah? You can do that, three? Yeah, good. We've got room for one more? David? And the other thing is, we can revisit this. We will have another trustee at some point, you know, so we can kind of, that trustee is going to need some committee time as well, so...
The other thing is, I want the new trustees to remember, there's a lot of work to learn their first year. So on top of it, dealing with the committees is also more work, too. So you need to also think of the big picture of your time commitment also.
I would hazard a guess that the reason that these three trustees are here is because these are parts of the board that they were all very interested in. So I feel comfortable with you taking on that kind of a burden if you guys are okay with it.
For now, I'm happy to join the Legislative and Action Committee as well.
Terrific. Absolutely, yeah. And again, when we have a seventh board member, we can see where that person's interest lies and see if we need to do some shifting and how you guys are feeling about the time commitment and how it's working for everyone. I think that'll be an excellent time to revisit this. So I'm just going to quickly go over who has agreed to do what. The Audit Committee, you can't hear me. I don't know how to solve this. All right, how about now? Is that better?
I can hear it.
Okay. So I'm just going to go over the committees again. Megan, I'm sorry, I have my back to you. And make sure that everyone, I wrote down everyone and what you agreed to, and make sure that I didn't get it wrong. The Audit Committee is Trustee Bishop and Trustee Ramondo. Facilities Committee, Trustee Story, Trustee Wallace, Trustee Sherry. Policy Committee, Trustee Bishop, Trustee Lynch, Trustee Ramondo. Communications Committee, Trustee Wallace, Trustee Lynch, and Trustee Bishop. Legislative Action Committee, Trustee Wallace, Trustee Lynch, and myself. Anybody hear anything different than what I just read? Everyone's comfortable? Okay, great. Moving on to item 11.
Sorry, Emily, just a question. Is there a shared decision-making committee moving forward?
It's not a board committee.
Okay, thank you.
So there is definitely a shared decision-making committee, but it's not one that we participate in. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to item 11, the acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of June 21st, 2022. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop? No, we did that already. That was, we voted on the committees, on the formation of the committees, and then we just... May I have a second? Trustee Ramondo? Any comments or questions? I would point out here that a community member felt as if we had left a community member who spoke at the last meeting off of the minutes. That was Lindsay Shan. She did not speak at Public Be Heard. She spoke at the, what was it called? The Safety Committee Public Hearing, which is why her name was not, was not on there. It was not left off intentionally. It was just not a public be-heard comment, so I just want to make that clear. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, probably. Trustee Ramondo, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Superintendent District News, the superintendent will report her district news.
Good evening. First, I'd like to welcome our new trustees. It's lovely to see you all. Please know that we are excited to partner with you.
No, it sounds good.
Really? Okay, sounds very odd to me, but we understand that you will be inundated with information, and we are happy to meet with you and answer any questions or just provide background information, because there are so many situations that you're kind of jumping into the middle of. And so any history that you are interested in, please do not hesitate to ask us. We, and I'm going to speak broadly for all of the administrators, but I know we all feel this way. We want the board to feel informed and comfortable with the decisions that you need to make. I never want to be in a place where you have to decide on something and you don't feel like you have enough information to make a solid decision. So no, that is always our goal. We try not to rush things in that way. So the school calendar is on the agenda tonight, so we have partnered with the OTA to amend the 22-23 school calendar. Because New Year's Day falls on a Sunday, the official observance of this holiday falls on Monday, January 2nd. The revised version of our calendar now recognizes this holiday. Thankfully, this revision should have very minimal impact for families and staff. This is not shortening any of our summer break, and I think people would have been planning on having New Year's Day off. Just a note, and this will be a... So I'm looking forward to sharing that with the committee and working with them to analyze the results and determine our next steps. I need to let everyone know that Sheriff Figaroa reached out to me to thank the board for inviting him to our last board meeting to discuss the School Resource Officer Program and our partnership with the Ulster County Sheriff's Office. He very much appreciated the opportunity to speak with the board. And also, as was brought up in the meeting last, our last meeting, Comptroller March Gallagher is working on expanding the broadband access within Ulster County and by extension within Antioa. And former trustee DeJesus did arrange for a meeting, so I am going to be meeting with comptroller Gallagher this week on Thursday to talk more about how we can partner and really work together to expand that. And I thought I would give Assistant Superintendent Laffin a moment to speak as well to bring the board up to date on all of the work she has done to try and provide options for our secondary students for summer school. It has certainly not been an easy path and there have been a number of challenges, but she has been really dedicated to providing some options for our students, so I will hand it over to her.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaren. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our new board members. I just wanted to speak first as a bit of a summary to our K-6 Summer Skills Academy. That is located at Bennett Again this year and it begins Monday, July 11th and ends on August 5th. It's a four-week program. It runs Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 11:30. We have transportation provided and we've worked with Nicole Summers to increase our level of service, to make the pickup and transportation options for the K-6 program as close as possible to school year pickups. So that their transportation is not a reason that anyone may not be able to attend. So I want to thank transportation for that. And we've got 67 students participating in Summer Skills Academy, K-6, and the focus is on reading, writing, and math this year. So I'm really happy to have that program going again this year and I look forward to growing that as the years go by. I think it's a great opportunity for us to not only address any summer slide, but also to support enrichment opportunities. So I look forward to that program growing. In particular, as to why I was asked to speak 7 through 12 summer school, lots of moving parts. So I've been working with Ulster Bosse's and the Saugertie School District to provide our students with those opportunities for summer school. And really, I want to also thank our guidance counselors because they have worked with families to determine, for those students who need a credit recovery this summer, to determine what is the better fit for them, whether an in-person program is a good fit for them or due to the flexibility that that student needs, if the online edgenuity version is better for them. So we provided two options. Saugertie's provided us with all of the classes that they offer their students. And it turns out that we have three students who are going to be opting to go to Saugertie's. That program starts tomorrow and runs through August 15th and we are providing transportation. Our other option, edgenuity, the online program, is the same program we offered last summer. It's the exact same experience for those students. And we had, we have 30 students in that program, families that chose that option. Maybe it was convenience, flexibility, maybe they only needed one class. In order to attend Saugertie's, you needed two classes to attend that program. There were just a couple of students that that was the situation, but many, many families opting into that edgenuity program. And one other thing I'm looking forward to, I've been working with Mr. Edelman and guidance and some teachers to think about how we might be able to provide some much-needed structure to some of our students who have chosen edgenuity. So Mr. Edelman is with guidance counselor, they've been surveying parents to say who might be interested in if we had a teacher here in the mornings, bringing your student in so that they had some support and structure in that way and also doing a survey on who might need transportation. So that's still in the works. That program does not begin until the 11th. And then as far as August regents exams goes, our students will be going to Kingston High School, who are working with Kingston for that option for the August regents exams. And that's it.
Does anyone have questions? Sorry. Does anyone have questions for Assistant Superintendent Laffin? Trustee Story?
Assuming, but you know what happens when you assume things. Are students with IEPs that will be taking their regences in August at Kingston will have their accommodations, test read, all that stuff should?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Laffin, I wondered if, if you could help us understand a little bit some of the roadblocks that we have to providing summer education, 7 through 12 here at the building so that we could think about how we can support you and changing that potentially.
I would say the roadblocks that we have to providing it here are the same that every single school district is experiencing this year. The market, the, the supply and demand market for summer school teachers, quite frankly, has changed. And there are lots of opportunities for teachers to, particularly secondary teachers, to teach remotely in other programs so that, that they can avail themselves of all the opportunities of travel and other responsibilities. And they could still work in those programs that don't require them to day by day for six weeks show up in a place. So I think that's really the largest challenge in working with other districts, Kingston, Saugertie's, all districts were asking us to supply teachers in partnership. They needed us to give them teachers and that's something that, you know, has been a challenge for every school district.
I know that you've worked really hard on this and, you know, I'd really like to thank you for all of the hours that you put into making sure that the students who needed it would have access to summer education. I think it's vitally important and I think you've done a terrific job. So thank you for that. And I wonder if there's a benefit to, you know, really looking at the edgenuity program and seeing if there are ways that we can supplement it so that more of the students over the summer can get their needs met and making sure that they have access to education. Does anybody else have questions for Assistant Superintendent Laffin? No? Okay. All right, moving on. The board will acknowledge, does the board district news, does the board have any district news to report? Trustee Ramondo?
Hi. Thank you, President Sherry. I would like to say how honored I am that the voters elected me to work alongside all of you. I truly look forward to the responsibility of being a trustee. I would also like to congratulate trustee Hemingway Lynch and trustee Wallace, as well as President Sherry and Vice President Bishop in their newly-elected roles. Finally, I would like to report that I have completed the mandatory NISBA fiscal oversight training as of last week.
Wow, trustee Ramondo, that's impressive. Yeah. That was, that's right up your alley. Good job. Yeah. So just so everyone is clear, the board members are required, new board members are required to complete training by NISBA. And there is a fiscal part and then there is a board duties part. You can do it online or you can do it in person, but it is a requirement and.
But we have a year.
You, you do, you do have a year. Yes, you do have a year. You don't have to be an overachiever.
However, the sooner you get it done, the better it is because there's a lot of required knowledge that will help in those trainings.
And, and I would say that, that trustee Bishop and I both had different experiences, so we can probably each talk to that a little bit. Trustee Bishop did hers in person and I did mine online, mostly for scheduling reasons. I thought you went in person.
I did.
You did it in person.
I couldn't because of COVID.
Oh, right. The COVID. Yeah. Well, I did mine online and it was great because I could take the time that I needed and I didn't have pressure and could feed my children and then focus on my NISBA duties. So I would just encourage everyone to get it done in the way that you can. And in the meantime, if anything comes up that might be covered there, don't feel, don't feel uncomfortable asking any questions and certainly District Clerk Ms. Gates can help you figure out what's best for you. And the district obviously pays for that. Any other board district news? Trustee Story?
Yes, trustee Sherry, myself, trustee Salem, and trustee Bishop all attended a graduation and it was great. One thing I'd love to see is if we could get more of our staff members there. I understand, you know, people have kids that are, their kids graduating, things can happen, but I would love to see if we could get more of our support staff up and enjoying because even, even our teachers, you know, from our elementary buildings, because they've all put work and effort into all of our students that have walked across that stage. So it was great. It was great to enjoy. One of the, the pleasures of being a school board member is being at graduation.
It was really special and really, I think we have one of the most beautiful locations for graduation that I've ever seen. It really is spectacular back there. And the kids all looked so happy and it's so nice to have a real graduation ceremony again. It felt really good. Any other board district news? No, okay. The board will acknowledge the public be heard comments from the last meeting. There were no comments. Public and student comment. Public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please limit comments to three minutes during public be heard. Civility is always expected. Speakers at public be heard understand that the Board of Education cannot engage in discussion nor answer questions during public be heard. The Board of Education and superintendent cannot be party to discussions of individual student or personnel matters in open session. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to superintendent's attention. And we do have Ms. Acker-Raymond who would like to speak at public heard. Natalie, you can take that.
My name is Natalie Acker-Raymond and I formerly was a member of the PTA at the Woodstock Elementary School. I was the vice president. I was very active in the school community and both my children attended and were very active in the school. My son is moving up now to seventh grade. For the past three years, we've been homeschooling. And being that he's now moving up to seventh grade, he would like to be a member of team sports that are here at the school. And I'm hoping to start unraveling the web of all of the legislation regarding all kinds of different, I would like to use the word discrimination, when it comes to students not being included. And I'm hoping that I have the support of everyone here when it comes to trying to make it so that his well-being and his mental health and the things that he enjoys doing, which is, he's very big into sports. So of course, you know, there's other things that we can do, but he's been quarterback of the Eagles football team previously and he really enjoys baseball. He's been an all-star year after year with the baseball team here, which now he's aged out of. So he's just hoping that he'll still be able to participate with his friends and be included. And I'm hoping that we can gear ourselves up. I know you guys work really hard and I thank you for your time with just one more thing to do on your to-do lists. So I'm just hoping that we can do something about him being able to participate and all other students being able to participate and be included. And that's something that I'll be looking into and I hope that you'll support our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acker-Raymond. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Moving on, discussion and possible action, item 16.01. Recommended action be hereby resolved on recommendation by the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education of the Antioa Central School District approve the contract between the Antioa Central School District and ASTER Services for Children and Family for Mental Health Intensive School Support Services effective September 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023 at a rate of $9,833 per month to an annual total of $98,303 and authorizes the superintendent to sign such an agreement. We have a first. Trustee Wallace, second. Trustee Bishop. Comments? Questions? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you very much. Just a question that I posed earlier and thanks, first of all, to all the preparation for this. I really appreciate it and I'm very excited that this is happening. But curious about the support staff that might be available to the clinician? There was a question about how that would be implemented and I know the folks from ASTER couldn't be here tonight, but I didn't know if Ms. Allison could speak to that. As I understand it, the clinician would be available for referrals from staff, but also directly from parents and families? And I'm just curious what kind of support the clinician will have to be successful.
Great question. Can you all hear me? Okay. So in our extensive conversations with ASTER, we have a lot of flexibility in how we can utilize that staff and we can look to other models of what our neighboring districts have also been using, ASTER foreign districts such as New Paltz, Kingston, Pauling. Other districts use other places like Rockland County Psychiatric as their community mental health source. But the ASTER clinicians are really there to support our psychologists, social workers, and school counselors in any way that they would like. They're not there to certainly do that role. They're there to support our families. They are there, if we need them, in terms of crisis support or assessment and they're there to help build a bridge and liaison between our students and families and the community-based mental health services that programs such as ASTER can provide, like Benny partial hospitalizations and case management and a single point of action support. So they're really there, we have a lot of flexibility. I think my personal vision is that they're really there to support all of our families in K to 12 or even pre-K to 12 in terms of providing family therapy, trauma-informed therapy, support groups, support groups for our students. We can be so creative in what we can do with it. We can look at DBT groups. We could look at anxiety groups. And all of that will be able to work on a community mental health base and let our clinicians work on a school-based mental health approach.
Hi, my name is Gina. I'm, I'm joining from ASTER Services. If it's okay, I can also add to that?
Yes, thank you, Gina. Go ahead. It's hard to hear you, so if you could just speak slowly, it might help us and directly into the microphone.
Got it. Just interrupt me if this is not clear. So I appreciate you having me join virtually tonight. Apologies for that. I know this is a little out of the norm. So as was shared, I just wanted to highlight that it is intentionally somewhat vague so that we can accommodate the school district's need as they come. So we can start off with a group. We can transition to supporting other needs. We can support if there are crises happening in a particular building, in a particular classroom, with particular students. And really meant to integrate into your school district culture as well as respond to and be proactive about the needs and unique needs for your students, your families, your staff. students, your families, your staff, in your district. So as was shared, can be very creative and very different and change based on what's needed.
And I'll add to that, that one of the ways that we'll evaluate is through the monthly reports that ASTER will provide to us and I would be the liaison with them so we would be working together to make sure that everybody was feeling like this was working successfully.
Thanks to both of you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to say that post-COVID, we are seeing our children, and I mean this collectively, and I'm not talking about Antiora, I'm talking about collectively, our children are suffering. And anything we can do to alleviate that suffering and proactively deal with their mental health is so powerful and important at this moment. I want to just applaud the administration for taking a proactive step to help our kids.
Would anyone else like to ask a question of Ms. Allison or ASTER?
I did want to better understand how, let's say, a potential client who maybe didn't have insurance or didn't want to avail themselves to, for instance, Medicaid for whatever reason, Pride, whatever, would be taken care of through your initiative.
I'll start that answer and Gina, I feel like I'm talking like the Wizard of Oz because I just hear your voice. You can certainly fill in, but I believe that ASTER provides a sliding scale. So if you are uninsured, they're not going to turn you away. They certainly can support the needs of the clients that they work with. You know, but if people are insured, that they'll certainly work with that, but they will work based on what is needed and certainly Antiora students and families would be the priority that they would take care of. Gina, did you want to add to that?
Yes, I can. So we definitely accept any and all insurances. That includes Medicaid and commercial insurances as well as we will work absolutely with the family if they don't have insurance. One of the other things that ASTER has is family advocates. And so if a family does not have insurance, we will work with that family to ensure that they get insurance so that all of that child's medical needs are met and we will support them until they get insurance. So just like was shared, we can do sliding scale, we'll support them with the insurance piece, even someone who has commercial. We don't accept copayments from your students. You know, we don't want kids walking into school, exchange of money, checks. So that's sort of built in based on your Medicaid numbers and whatnot. We've sort of worked that into the budget. So whatever a family is responsible, whatever's covered in terms of insurance is covered. So we will work with all insurances. We will work with the family if we need to set up a sliding scale fee and will work, they can work directly with billing. We're very accommodating. The goal is just to keep the program sustainable. We're not, we're nonprofit. We're not here to make money. We're just here to make sure we can house the clinician, make sure they have sustainable and that they can be retained and continue. That's the goal.
My understanding, Gina, is that in all the years you've done this, you've never not had a clinician who was completely full with clients in any district that they've been in. So I think once we build it, everything will come.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we find that, and that's why we have the clinician embedded in the district, because what we find is that they become part of the community, they become accepted and everyone, it starts to de-stigmatize the service. So not only do you have trusted adults that are recommending this, but then they have peers saying to them, hey, come meet so-and-so. I've been talking to them and it's really helpful for me. I think it'd be helpful for you. And they can walk their friend down the hall to meet our clinician and get connected. So we find that to be a really effective model and the clinicians, you know, caseloads are not a problem.
I would just add, Superintendent Ms. Allison, if you would be forthcoming in letting us know if demand exceeds expectations so that we can readjust, because I agree, it's a great program and I want to make sure that it continues if it's successful as you measure it quarterly or whatever cadence you're thinking about measurement.
Absolutely. In fact, I think it would be appropriate to kind of report to you guys as we started and we get our true data and quantifiable information to show you how it's being utilized. And like for many other districts, they've actually increased it so that they can support even more districts, more schools in their district. So I think it certainly, as we are still unraveling what the pandemic effects are going to be on all, all members of our community, I think we're trying to be, as trustee Wallace said, proactive in providing as much support as we can to our students and families.
And ASTER does have a data analytics team that is completely devoted to data and so the supervisor of the program is going to work closely with you all the whole year through, making sure that the clinician has what they need and making sure you all are getting what you need. So if for some reason demand starts to increase and there's a concern or anything like that, we're going to be in touch with you. We can provide de-identified data if you want to know caseloads, you want to know, you know, how many students from a particular age or grade or school building or whatever that might look like. So, you know, we can certainly also provide different data points to you, again, de-identified for HIPAA reasons and talk through any of those and we keep a close eye on that. So if things get concerning in either direction, right? So if we were to say, oh, you know, it's a couple months in and we haven't built up a caseload, let's talk about that. Or wow, caseload is booming, you know, and we really need, we're thinking we're going to need to add a second clinician, you know, maybe next academic year and we'll talk to you about what that would look like, what that means for the district, et cetera, and sort of propose different options to you all. And at the end of the day, you all get to decide. So, but we do have a lot of data available to us that we are happy to share with you to keep everyone informed.
I just want one clarifying question about copayments, because some people's copayments can be up to $100 or more. So if we're using somebody's, you know, private insurance, I understand you said that, you know, the kids wouldn't have to bring the money into the school, they deal with the billing thing. What if a parent can't afford their copayment, you know, for the mental health portion of this? You know, you said there's a sliding scale, but you know, that's if they don't have health insurance.
Okay, so I think the question I heard was if there's a high deductible or high copayment?
Correct.
Okay. So my understanding is that we do not accept, we will not take any copayments from families. Like I said, because we don't want students worried about bringing checks or cash in to give to the clinician, then the clinician's got money they need to get back to billing. So we typically don't take, again, it's part of the contract that whatever we get reimbursed from insurance, we get reimbursed. If there was a situation though where we were going to need to collect money for, whether they're uninsured or some particular reason, we would work directly with the family if there was any concerns around either sliding scale within that or and/or payment plans. So, I mean, I can give you a general example of that is, you know, if a family owes $100, mom says, well, I don't, I can't pay weekly. I only get paid every other week. Okay, fine. Do you want to, you know, and we'll work with that adult around when they want to make payments, how much they can pay. Our billing team will, is very accommodating, but in terms of the contract with the school, we typically will not request that the copayments be covered because that's sort of, we've sort of built that into our numbers and we're making sure that that's sustainable.
So you're not requiring the school to do anything with the copayments, but the parents would still be responsible to them, no?
No. So the way, the way I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and I think Val's question might be a little bit different than what Gina just explained. The ASTER does not require any copayments at all from families or from the school. It's built into our contract is my first understanding. My second would be, what if a family has a very large spend down on their insurance plan and they are unable to meet that spend down or unable to or unwilling to use the services because they have a large spend down? Do they have another option in terms of working with ASTER? Would you at that point potentially set up a payment plan with them or a way to prevent that from creating a roadblock?
No, we won't. There's no roadblocks. We will serve anyone and everyone, no roadblocks at all. Yeah, no, we won't turn anyone away for inability to pay.
Following up.
Really short answer to that.
What is the low end of the sliding scale? And the high end, just for interest? If you have one?
I don't. Not off the top of my head.
So Ms. Allison, I think I would just ask you that if you see any roadblocks in access to services for any of our students, that obviously you would speak to Superintendent McLaren and make sure that that was clear so that we could work through it together.
Absolutely. And I think that, oh, go ahead, Gina.
Let me just clarify one last piece. Sorry to interrupt. Is if there's a, if the sliding scale fee was, from whosoever's perspective, was high, right? I mean, I could say that the high end of the sliding scale fee is $50 a session and some might say that's not a lot and some might say it is a lot. Regardless of what that number is, if that number is deemed too high, like not reasonable for that family and they say we cannot pay it, even if it's $10 a session, we'll work with the family. We will not at any point say, oh, well, $10 isn't a lot of money. If you can't pay that, we can't see you. You have to be able to pay something. We will work with the family to ensure that the child gets services. That is the bottom line. Does that better answer the question?
I think if I could jump in, I think when we start to, if this is approved and we start to roll it out, I think some informational sessions with families and some clear, as Ms. Laffin always tells me, a clear one-pager in terms of our procedures, protocols for families, both in English and Spanish, would be helpful for not only our families, but probably for all of us because insurance is a whole other level of confusion. So I think going forward, we would, we would certainly look at kind of ironing all that
I absolutely agree. That was one of the questions that I had posed earlier, but Gina, since we have you, I think it would be great to also see some existing communications that you've used in these other districts and how we could, you know, adapt them for our families, but communicating, over-communicating will be really important.
So is the question, how do we communicate with the other districts and can we model that with you?
Yeah, if we could just see some of your one-pagers or other marketing materials that you've used to help families understand what these services are in a school district, maybe we could model them to adapt them for our community.
Sure. So Lynn Gallard is the supervisor and then myself and Hamali, so that we're on a team together at ASTER as well. You will have access to the three of us whenever you need. You can email us, you can call us, you can text us. So you'll always have access to someone in addition to the clinician at ASTER. If you need support, if you have a question, if something comes up, if there's a crisis or if it's just a run-of-the-mill question and you're not sure how to handle something. So that's sort of the spontaneous, as we go and as we learn sort of situation. The regular communication will also happen with Lynn. So you'll have regular meetings. You are welcome to invite whoever you'd like to those meetings to participate, to talk about the contract, how are things going? We do a lot of check-ins, again, with whatever is best for you, right? We know you all are busy at the start of the school year, et cetera, and we want to make sure that you know we're a part of that and we're here for you. So within your schedule and within what works for you, we can, we'll meet regularly. That'll be in person, that can be virtually, again, however is best for you all. And then in terms of things like marketing, we do have marketing materials that we can give to you, that you can send out, however you typically do that. We can give you actual paper flyers that you can put up on bulletin boards, that you can hand out to families. We do a lot of QR codes. We do, we have a specific page in our website that is devoted to our sort of, our counseling centers. You all are considered like a satellite of that. So it'll have a list of the districts that we provide services to, describe what those services are. And so all of that is available as well.
Thank you, Gina. I just want to clarify a few things. First, our point of contact will be Ms. Allison. It will not be directly with ASTER, so no members of the board should be prepared to contact ASTER directly. All questions can go through Superintendent McLaren or to Ms. Allison and they will be our point of contact if we have questions. And Ms. Allison, I would just ask if we could plan maybe in three months or, you know, three months past September, a check-in with some of the data that Gina is discussing and kind of your own feedback as to how the program is going and when you're ready to share materials, I assume prior to the start of the school year with families, we'd love to see them.
Absolutely. I think three months after the start of the school year gives us a good amount of data points in terms of being able to see a pattern and trend. And I think I would like to be creative in how we reach to our families. Let's utilize our community resources, let's utilize our libraries, let's utilize our restaurants, whatever it is that we are going to get our families who don't all have equity in terms of Wi-Fi access and internet and let's get them to be able to be, to see what's visibly out there to support them.
Terrific.
We also are happy to participate in things like back-to-school nights, parent nights, any opportunity that there is to interact with the families in the district, we are happy to be a part of that when you all feel it's appropriate.
Terrific. Thank you, Gina. I appreciate your support. And trustee Bishop has a question.
Just curious about any interaction and collaboration between our clinical team and the ASTER staff and, you know, just to get feedback from the folks on the, you know, on the ground here in Antiora to see, you know, how the whole thing is going in terms of that collaboration.
Absolutely. It was our goal to have a discussion prior to the end of the school year with our clinical team and administrators, but we didn't want to put the horse before the cart. So we wanted to make sure that we followed the process, but I definitely think that they are incredibly important stakeholder group and need to feel like they're a part in making that process and what's going to be meaningful and supportive to them and our families. The whole idea of this came from them and I want to honor that, I want to validate that, that they're saying we need more support for our families outside of a school day and that's really why we're here. So they're definitely an integral part and will be essential in terms of feedback.
Terrific. Does anybody have any more questions for either ASTER or Ms. Allison? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allison. I know you've put a tremendous amount of work into this. I appreciate it. Okay, we're going to talk about board norms, item sixteen point zero two. So these are the board norms and essentially that is the, kind of the, almost like the code of conduct for the board itself. If you have, I'm going to read them if you have any questions. Let's just get through them and then talk about them at the end. Before board meetings, members will submit items to be placed on the agenda in ample time so the superintendent may assemble information bearing on the item before the meeting. Number two, ensure that there is adequate time for board members to prepare and review all relevant materials, information, data, et cetera, related to the agenda items. Whenever possible, contact the superintendent with agenda questions well in advance of the meeting, allowing time for the superintendent and staff to gather pertinent information. Additional questions may still be presented during the board meeting as necessary. Request information from or through the superintendent and only from staff members with the prior knowledge of the superintendent. Refer all persons with positive or negative comments regarding school district operations to the proper staff person or administrator directly responsible for the operational activity. Focus on the board's role and not become involved in the day-to-day operations of the school system. We will not engage in the resolution of problems, rather, we will refer the We will not engage in the resolution of problems, rather, we will refer these concerns to the superintendent. Limit the amount of time board members spend in schools and central administration to only scheduled board meetings, committee meetings, agenda setting, and other board-approved meetings or tours of which the entire board is aware. During board meetings, members will ensure they are fully prepared, on time, and ready to participate, endeavor to start and end meetings on time, avoid hidden agendas and spring any surprises on other members. Once recognized by the board president, ensure that each board member is allowed to speak without interruption. Focus on an agenda item until it is resolved or until a specified time has been reached to resume the resolution process. Say it once, say it well. Model the behaviors of the board, model the behaviors the board expects of students, staff, and community members. Before committing to a position on an agenda item or issue, make sure all relevant information is presented, including the superintendent's recommendation. After board meetings, members will support the decisions of the board and will not work to undermine board decisions or encourage others to do so. Abide by the confidentiality laws of executive session and ensure all documents, records, reports, et cetera, are treated in accordance with applicable laws, regulations, policies, et cetera. I know that Trustee Lynch had a question regarding item five, and I was hoping that Superintendent McLaren could clarify.
And other board members who have history could also add to this, but my understanding is that this became an agenda item so that board members were not popping into schools as a board member and because when a board member shows up not as a parent, they don't have any authority, an individual board member has no authority on their own, but there is a perception of authority and it can be very disruptive. But this in no way is meant to limit a person's time in the school in support of their own children and in support of the school. That was never the intention.
Sarah, does that, Val, do you want to add something to that?
Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, I just, some of the words are obviously vague, purposely vague, but I just wanted to make sure that it was clear as I start my tenure here that I intend to participate actively as a parent. Thank you.
And that's highly encouraged, obviously. I mean, I think that the wording of these is kind of meant to just provide a framework. As parents, our roles are completely different than as board members, and we all right now have children or grandchildren who are in the district and all participate as much as we possibly can. So I think that that was an important clarification. Does anybody have questions about any of the other current board norms? Trustee Story?
Actually, I think we need to add one to it, say that we all communicate with the new board email address, that all emails get sent to that, our new board trustee email, that that gets, that that's how we communicate with one another electronically.
I would just be cautious about putting that into writing because there are times when the board as a whole needs to communicate with the superintendent and with the district clerk, so I think we would need to...
But no, as our board norms, when we're communicating, we're supposed to include the superintendent and all of board members.
That email doesn't do that.
But we, what I'm trying to have avoid that has happened to me numerous times was that I have not received full emails that were sent to all board members. To other board members, I have not received them. So by having this dedicated email that when we're sending something to one person, it is getting sent to everybody. We send it to that one email that we had put together, that we had our director of technology put together for us already. So this is how we communicate, so every board member gets all emails. That's what I'm trying to say.
Can I just maybe suggest that that's, maybe we use the words best practice, you know, to, so it's not a dictum that is something that we follow with best, in a best practice. I think it's, it certainly is.
Yeah, I think that we just need to clarify that there is, there was a Board of Education email that included the district clerk and that we have since created one that does not include the district clerk. So if we are going to use the new one, we need to be very careful that when we need the district clerk to be involved, that she is included and that the superintendent is CC'd on every email that goes out because she is not part of that, and that is my concern.
Understandable. It's going to be, instead, it's going to be sent to the Antiora, to all seven trustees, and then when you're sending it, the board member who's sending it also has to send it, that CC, the superintendent and the district clerk if it's for district clerk also. That's, you know, this is, so we have it, it's in one pile, it's in one thing, everybody knows what's going on.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions or comments about that?
I do have one more question. Because things pop up in these meetings that frankly create brainstorms sometimes. And in new business, would it be fair to say, not assuming that, you know, you're expecting, you know, facts to be, you know, suddenly, you know, put together, but can we use new business for some sort of, you know, sometimes brainstorms that do come up? Is that a fair norm?
I think that is a fair norm, and I think that the superintendent does expect that. I think that we just need to be really respectful of not putting cabinet members on the spot and making sure that if we know our questions ahead of time, that they are given those so that they can be prepared to answer them. If something comes up during a board meeting, then certainly there is an expectation that we can all discuss it and discuss it with the superintendent or with Assistant Superintendent Laffin so that, you know, they can get the answers for us. I do not think that any of us should expect them to be able to answer everything on the spot, so that would just be something I would be careful of.
That's why we have the RFI part of our, part of our meetings, so we send, when we have questions for the, our admins, we ask our superintendent, and that's when she asks her cabinet, and we'll get emails back from our superintendent with the answers.
So the RFI section is where you would ask a specific question. In new business, you can brainstorm, you can kind of spitball ideas with your colleagues. RFI would be the place to ask if you have a specific data-driven point or a specific question that you would like to get answered within a certain amount of time. And those can also be emailed to the superintendent, they don't have to only be done during board meetings.
Apologies, what's RFI?
Request for information. So that's kind of like an official request for information. If you wanted a data point, if you wanted a specific question answered, to give the superintendent time to get that done. So one thing that I think came up a lot last year that I don't know needs to be a board norm because it is addressed by NISBA, but attendance at these meetings are really important. We're not always able to be here, all of us, and certainly, family emergencies, planned vacations, things happen for all of us. But NISBA does require that you do not miss more than three meetings in a row, and if that does happen, then the board does have the right to ask you to step down. So I think that's an important kind of piece of this, is that, you know, the continuity of the board and the ability of the board to communicate with one another and to work effectively together and with the superintendent is really undermined when meetings are not able to be met in person in multiple times in a row. So I just kind of want to make everyone aware of that and make sure that as a board, we work together to cover each other and to support one another and to attend meetings in person whenever possible. And Ms. Lynch, I think you had an idea for a board norm that I thought was pretty interesting.
Thank you. I'm drowning in paper up here, apologies. It will get better. But I have the, you know, the privilege of being a new trustee, so I have the School Board Member Handbook front and center. And I was just somewhat inspired by the sentiment that, you know, we are all serving in trust for the entire community. And I felt that that was really sort of a sweet and simple way to maybe help ground some of our work around sort of the inclusive communications that we've talked about, really thinking hard about when we're talking about new policies or new ideas or brainstorms or whatever, we're also making the language we choose to be, you know, quite accessible to any parent or any member of the community, and they have a good sense of what we are trying to do. And so I just wondered if you all would consider adding a norm that, and again, the words were straight out of the handbook, but just that might bring that sentiment front and center. So the words I suggested were serving in host, serving in trust for the entire community.
I mean, I love this idea. I think it's an excellent inclusion, and I would also take it so far as to represent political ideology, which I think is a really important part of leaving off of your board service. I think that each one of us as an elected member of the board represents the entire community, and we need to recognize that this community in particular is made up of many different people with many different political ideologies and many different ways of life, and that our job as a whole, as a board, is to do our best to represent all of them. And I think that that board norm goes a long way in kind of reminding board members that we do have that duty and that, you know, we need to kind of leave some of our own stuff, our own personal stuff aside in order to have the board to be as inclusive as possible of each other and of the children and of the district as a whole. So I would certainly be in favor of that, and I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
I agree and concur.
I love that idea.
Okay, so if we're all in agreement, Amanda, I'd like to add that to the board norms. And Sarah can send you the wording, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yep, I'll send it to you now. Thank you. And thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Trustee Lynch. Does anyone else have questions about board norms or discussion about board norms before we move on?
Were we adding the one about the email also? That's...
I'd like to work on the wording of that, and I'm happy to, if you have some wording that you'd like to propose.
Trustees add or use the XYZ email address when we communicate with each, within each other.
Well, I think it needs to specify if we communicate via email because there is obviously communication that happens in other ways that doesn't happen via email, so I just want to be careful of how we word that.
Well, we use in the email address, I said, we use email address XYZ, whatever the email address, we put that in there and use that as our sole communication for emails within board members.
I would take exception to sole and say that it should be, you know, either best practice or something that we generally do. I don't want to make any, you know, full-on exclusionary of any other communication.
Yeah, I agree with David. I think that it's important that, I think best practices are a really good way of putting it. We have a lot of best practices and we should work together potentially with Dr. Bill to do a board retreat to discuss best practices so that everybody's on the same page. And Val, I totally understand why you want to use that email exclusively, and I also think that it's very important when it comes to the possibility of having our emails foiled and need to be collected by our attorneys. It's certainly much more cost-effective for them. So I would be happy to add a board norm that says best practices to use the email address that was designed by Mr. Reimer last week, that includes all of us, with a reminder to CC, the board clerk is needed, and the superintendent always.
And I would suggest adding when the intention is to include the entire school board, because there would be times that, you know, you would not necessarily be including the entire school board.
Anytime you're trying to get, most of the time, the whole school board is supposed to be CC'd in all these emails because all board members are required to have the same information at the same time from everybody. So it's, you know, it's trying to get into the best practices.
But here's a scenario. What if in the Communications Committee, for example, I have something that I wanted to, you know, direct to the two other members of the Communication Committee, and it's in no way concerns the others?
That has nothing to, because you're doing within the Communication Committee, that has nothing to do with the whole board, but the communication, like facilities meetings, our facilities committee have our own emails also, so that has something completely different. But any of the board communications goes through all board members. There's different ways.
Right, I think that that's why we need to be really careful with the language, and I think that we should just take a little time, maybe the, actually, that's something that the Communication Committee could undertake for us, is just drafting a little bit of language that we can vote on at the next vote, at the next board meeting to have it added to board norms, because I think we're all kind of on the same page, but David's point is very important. We need to be able to do committee work exclusive of the committee, and there are certainly times when board members communicate with one another that may be relevant to a committee or to a discussion that they're having that the entire board is not, is not always CC'd on, and that is appropriate and okay. So I just, would the Communications Committee be willing to work on some of that language and we could talk about it at the next board meeting and vote on it?
Sure. And I think that it would be great if you started with a draft of what you'd like in a perfect world, you know?
And send it to the whole board and the board email. Okay, are we good? Okay. So if we, Val, if you could take the sentiment that you feel really strongly about, and I think is really important and needs to be addressed, because we did have a lot of trouble, I think the part that Val is alluding to but hasn't quite said yet is that there was a lot, there have been over the years, a lot of communication issues where potentially there were individual issues between board members, and then they might intentionally or unintentionally have left board members off of communication, and that is not effective. It does not work, and it, all it does is serve to alienate board members. And if we're going to work effectively as a team, we need to really avoid that, and Val's solution is an excellent one for avoiding that. And I think Valerie did great work by making sure that we had this option. We just need to come up with the right wording so that everybody's on the same page. So if you guys could work on that and we can approve it at the next board meeting, that would be terrific. And Val, if you have specific wording that you want to send to them, that would be great. Any other questions about board norms? Okay, so District Clerk Gates, can you make sure that that is on the next agenda so that we can approve that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 16.03, review 2022, 2023 student attendance by building. No vote, we are just reviewing. Has everybody had a chance to look at this? Are there any questions? No questions? We're hoping for better attendance next year. Okay. So the NISBA Resolution Kit, this is a review and brief discussion. We have the opportunity as a board to submit resolutions to NISBA, which the Board of Education of New York State all vote on. So each Board of Education has the opportunity to send in resolutions. They may or may not be accepted by NISBA. If they are accepted, they go to one very large document that we each review, and then we review as a board, and then we vote on each one, and then our vote becomes one vote. So majority rules, and we send in our vote to NISBA on each resolution. And at the annual conference convention, they will go over and either yea or nay each resolution. Antiora has in the past submitted successful resolutions prior to his, no, ever? I thought there was, two years ago.
We've never been successfully put, brought to, this resolution has been brought before to NISBA numerous times and numerous years. before to NISBA numerous times and numerous years and we've gotten shot down every single time.
But we successfully make it on the ballot, is what I would.
No, it's, we get the rationale that possibly they could change it. It's, we've never gotten on there because NISBA's always decided that this, with the healthcare things, that it's too big and we can't, they cannot support going to a single health payer, healthcare, which what all these resolutions have always been about.
So prior to ending his reign as president of the Antioch Board of Education for many years, Trustee Salem asked that we consider this resolution. Superintendent McLaren sent it to everyone today. I don't think we have to vote on it or agree to it today, but we do all kind of need to consider Trustee Salem's resolution, which is in regards to single payer healthcare in, in the way it directly impacts the taxpayers of this district. The amount of money that we spend on healthcare is absurd. And then if anyone else has any ideas about resolutions?
I think it does, it would need to be voted on today because it has to be submitted by August 1st and our meeting is not until August 2nd.
Can we have the resolution read again? So we can, I mean, is anyone, I mean, is that in the documents here or?
No, it's in your email.
Okay.
He had reached out to me to say he was unsuccessful in finding it, so I dug through my old email and found it.
I understand the context for his proposal is about having, it would have a direct impact on our budget, correct?
Correct.
So I think that Trustee Salem is, former Trustee Salem was very aware that, that this is not something that NISBA particularly feels comfortable with, but also would like to continue, Antioch, to continue being the squeaky wheel. It is certainly a conversation that's very relevant to our district because of the amount of money that we pay in benefits and it's also very relevant to the children and the families of our district, many of whom are uninsured or underinsured. Did anybody find the Victoria, yes, Superintendent McLaren can read it.
Whoever would like to read it. It's actually, he has three resolutions. So the first one says, resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support the proposed New York Health Act and any legislation at the state or federal level that provides single payer healthcare for all New Yorkers. And because in the resolution booklet, there is always a rationale. The rationale that goes with that is that the cost of health insurance has more than doubled since 2000, resulting in disproportionate budget increases for districts that take seriously the obligation to ensure the healthcare needs of their employees. Likewise, it has been demonstrated that students with poor health have a higher probability of school failure, grade retention, and dropout. As New York State Department of Education seeks resources to improve educational outcomes, the impediment caused by inadequate access to healthcare, especially for our poorest students and students with special healthcare needs, adds additional financial burden to the cost of public education.
So how do we feel about sending this resolution into NISBA? Does anybody have an opinion?
I'm sorry to say this, but knowing that NISBA will turn around and deny it again because it, within reading their rationales from the last three years, I'm sorry to say this, former Trustee Salem, but I, knowing they're not going to agree to it or bring it to the table, I don't feel like we can, should support this. Or I think it's better for, for the bigger government to deal with it. I don't know if us as a school district can, you know, can make it go to a single, single health payer, single healthcare.
Trustee Wallace?
I'm gonna, in honor of President Salem, former President Salem in his service, I'm gonna, I would just say that I think we should do this one more time and be the squeaky wheel to honor him and his service.
Trustee Lynch, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of pushing it forward. I just, I hear what you're saying, absolutely. But I, having been in advocacy a long time, sometimes it takes those who are in the, those who are feeling the pain, right, to continue to make their voices heard. So if, you know, if we could provide, you know, additional data, and I know you've already reached out to folks, Superintendent McLaren, to get that data and make it a strong case about the percentage of our overall budget, I think it would be quite helpful to continue to make it hurt, make this resolution move forward.
Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I support sending it in again. I do think that it would be a tremendous asset to the community and the district if ever it were to be accepted and approved. So I like to dream big.
Trustee Ramondo?
I'm all about being a squeaky wheel. So you never know. Whatever time this is could be the charm.
Yeah, I think that I, I feel really strongly about this issue, particularly as a taxpayer in this district because the amount of money that we pay is pretty absurd for the school district, but also the lack of insurance and underinsurance for the families and children of this district. Antioch would be very well represented in the single payer healthcare system. So I personally would also like to see us push this through. We need to vote on it tonight, but I don't know that we need to do, to finalize the wording?
It has to be submitted by August 1st.
But can we discuss?
We, we have to vote on what we're, the actual wordage, what we are putting into it. But the board all has to vote to approve us sending in these resolutions. So we have to do that tonight because we don't have another board meeting before the, before August 2nd, when these are required to be in.
Right, I understand that part. I was wondering if we could tweak the language a little bit if we all agreed on the sentiment. But I hear you saying no, so we will agree on the, we will agree on the wording tonight. David, could I ask you to take a quick look at this and see if?
I actually thought it was well-written and I didn't have any edits. So as an editor, I would say, let's go forward with it.
Terrific. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor of submitting the resolutions as written?
Wait, are we voting on one, two, or three?
On, on all three of them.
We've only discussed the first one. We didn't discuss the other two. So we should probably.
Let's vote on the first. Are we all in favor of the first resolution? All those in favor? Aye, thank you. Okay, so now Superintendent McLaren will read the second.
I can read the second. And actually, when I had found it and forwarded it to former Trustee Salem, he had actually said the third isn't really viable anymore. So I think if we just look at one and two, that might be appropriate. So number two is resolve that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation that requires every child in New York State aged zero to 21 be covered for free under the Child Health Plus program. The rationale being students with poor health have a higher probability of school failure, grade retention, and dropout. As New York State Education seeks, this looks like exactly the same one I just read. It is pretty much. "Seeks resources to improve educational outcomes. The impediment caused by inadequate access to healthcare, especially for our poorest students and students with special healthcare needs, adds additional financial burden to the cost of public education."
Does anybody have any questions about the second resolution? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. So we will send District Clerk Gates, we will send both of those resolutions into NISBA, please.
You got it.
Okay, item 16.05, the Board of Education approves the MOA between the Antioch Teachers Association and the Antioch Central School District to change the 2022-2023 school calendar and to reduce personal leave days from four to three days. May I have a first, please? Everybody's on. Okay, Trustee Wallace and Trustee Bishop. Trustee Story for a second. You have a question? Go ahead.
Remind me, what are we doing with the other unions for this?
So the, the other 10-month staff that is in Antia, their, their contract says that they work the same days as the OTA. So they will just, the 10-month staff will naturally fall into line there. And 12-month staff would have New Year's Day observed whether we thought that we were going to observe it or not. It's, it's kind of an official legal holiday.
We kind of have to give them that day off.
Exactly.
All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 16.06, recommended action, be it hereby resolved that the Board of Education of the Antioch Central School District upon recommendation by the superintendent of schools, hereby adopts the following K-6 math curriculum, illustrative mathematics. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second, Trustee Bishop. Does anyone have a question?
Can I just introduce that Assistant Superintendent Laffin put together a lovely presentation that was up on board docs. We were hoping that it would be acceptable for the board. There's a copy of it at your place. It kind of goes through the whole process that she followed with the entire team. And if you have questions, she'd be happy to answer them. Or if you want to look, if you want to go through the presentation, kind of whatever you'd prefer, but we didn't, we didn't think it was necessary to pull the screen down and have us all go down on the, in the seats and watch her present and then come back up and ask questions. It's more conducive to conversation if we stay here and just discuss. So if anybody would like Assistant Superintendent Laffin to walk through it or answer any questions, we are happy.
Are those some of the books that you also have if we, some of the new books right there, if we still choose to pursue or peruse?
Yes, I have some student six, grade six student workbooks that are associated. If you take a look, you'll notice they are very intentionally, there's not a lot of cutesy decoration or color. That was, that was actually something that the teachers really liked. They aren't particularly special education teachers. They aren't distracting, distracting pictures. It really allows them to focus on the activity and support some of the routines in the classroom. And one of the things many of our teachers liked is this program provides digital editable PDFs, which is amazing when it comes to differentiating and working through specifics to allow teachers to make the experience unique to their students. So we do have these imprint student workbooks, but everything teachers could edit and imprint themselves and make it unique to their own instruction and ability. So you're welcome to look at these. They aren't, you know, there's not a lot of, you know, decoration.
Am I correct that parents will still not be able to do it?
You never know. You just never know. Any other questions or anything you're wondering about from the presentation or if you want me to review anything? We're really excited about starting this. There's been a lot of discussion, very grassroots effort, and we're really looking forward to getting going on this.
And I would like to just point out on the, on the second slide of the presentation, this was a really comprehensive team that participated in this process. And I think everybody can feel really positively about that, having input from all of these people. These are all wonderful professionals and they're really invested in this.
Trustee Bishop?
Yeah, I just, I want to echo what Superintendent McLaren just said. I'm so impressed with the team and the process that you went through to make this determination. I'm super excited about it, too.
Thank you. I don't really get excited about math, but I, I think this is incredibly impressive. Just the fact that you met 11 times from January to June to work on this and the team that you pulled together to do it. I really appreciate the effort that you put into this and in choosing a curriculum because math is, is a challenge for so many of our students and their parents. So I think that anything that we can do to, to make this easier is, is amazing. And I really think that the amount of work you put into this is tremendous. So thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions for Superintendent Laffin? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. We have a new math curriculum. Yay, K-6 only.
Can I, we do not have a break scheduled on here. Can I recommend that we, five, ten minute, five-minute break?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, this meeting of the Antioa Board of Education is recalled to order. I don't know if that's a thing, but. Item 16.07, all right, this is the, I think this one's pretty important. I mean, they're all important, but we had this come up last year and New York State has made it so that there is a possibility of us using video conference if needed, but we need to have a resolution on the books. So, this is proposed language, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Antioa Central School District hereby adopts provisions of the Public Officers' Law, permitting board members to participate via video conference or similar technology for the following reasons: disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, quarantine due to contagious illness, disease, sorry, any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes a member's physical attendance at such meetings. So, what this does is, this is the language from New York State. We are not able to change it, but it does give us the flexibility as individual board members or if needed as a board to shift to a remote option if needed. And it did happen last year where there were a number of people on the board who were exposed to COVID. And if we had not shifted to a remote option, we would not have had a quorum. So, the reason, in my opinion, to adopt this resolution or to hereby adopt the provision of the Public Officers' Law, which would allow us to participate in that way. Does anybody have a question or a comment? Valerie?
In somewhere, I think from our attorneys, it said that we, or from New York State, that we had to have a quorum in person. We couldn't just be all remote. We have to have a quorum of in-person and then other people can attend via video conference. But we have to have a quorum in person where the public is allowed.
I don't remember seeing that. Amanda, is that something that you can look for?
I can go ahead and look for it, yep. I don't remember seeing it either.
It came, it came back from our attorneys and a while ago when this stuff started changing. But we, I clearly remember that we need to, because it was also in that document, it also said that we had to have a public thing. We'd had to have a public, we had to approve a policy for it.
Right, well, I would suggest, I'm not going to make a suggestion about how people vote, but I would personally like to approve this policy because I think it's really important that anyone who would like to participate but is unable to do so in person because of the reasons outlined here is able to do so. And I would also say that I believe that the law has changed. Amanda, maybe you can clarify this for us. I do not believe that we need to give out the location under the open meetings law anymore of where we are participating from because that made me personally quite uncomfortable to the idea that anyone from the community could show up at my home and participate with me. And that meeting was not comfortable for my children. So, I am, for one, glad that that has been changed. And wondering if anyone else has questions or comments?
Just for reference, I think that what trustee Story and I were alluding to was the extension of the law through July, something, mid-July, I was saying. Yeah, that was where the wording was pretty clear. But agree with you, President Sherry.
But this isn't a policy, this is a resolution. So, we, what we need to do is form, the policy committee needs to do a policy. We don't, that's what we need to do and that's how we do it. That was what I read in the paperwork that said that we had to have a quorum in-person, had to be quorum, and the other people could be remote. But we had to be here. But it had to be a policy, the board has to adopt a policy. And not, this is just a resolution, this is not policy. So, if we, how about we table this for tonight and we'll get more information from our attorneys and do that and we could...
Well, my understanding is that we need to to just have this conversation and that this would be the first step in writing the policy. If we all agree to pass the resolution, then the next step is the policy. That's my understanding of how it works.
We're passing a resolution, then a policy? Normally it's...
Well, we're accepting the resolution that the, that the state has asked us to accept.
But also, but we have, the other point is that we still have to do where it says that we have to have a quorum in-person. That's, that has to be included in this resolution. So, then we have to change it because there's...
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't discuss quorum at all. It just states the reasons that one could choose to not be in-person.
But the quorum has to be part of that. The in-person quorum, and then the rest can be remote.
Yep, I understand. I think that they're, we're looking at two different, two different things. This is saying that this permits board members to participate via video conference or similar technology for these reasons. That's the only thing that we're agreeing to here. We are not stating whether or not that we agree with the quorum or don't agree with the quorum. We're just acknowledging that these are the reasons that you can participate by video conference.
I would suggest that we do a little research on the quorum piece. And I'm wondering if that is part of the, I don't have the terminology, but the laws that the governor was passing just because of COVID and, you know, allowing remote board meetings and remote other things as well. And also, to, you know, if we were going to look to make this into a policy, that we research to find out if NISBA has a policy. Did you find something, Amanda?
So, I found something here from the attorney. It said, can a board conduct its meetings solely via video conferencing under the new law? It's not a definite yes or no, which is why I was hesitant to say anything during this meeting. It said generally speaking, no, but it lists all the terms as to why we can do it. The resolution is strictly from our attorney verbatim, what is, what I put on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, so, as a board, what would we like to do with this?
May I suggest that we pass the resolution as step A and then research the quorum. Hopefully, it would mean that we'd be all set, but maybe we would then revisit next, the next meeting.
That would be my suggestion as well. Does anyone else have an opinion?
I would agree with that. Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, so, all those in favor of passing the resolution? We need a first and a second. Okay, may I have a first in favor of passing the resolution? Trustee Wallace, a second. Trustee Bishop, thank you. All those in favor of passing the resolution? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 16.08, travel reimbursement for board members. The Board of Education hereby approves the reimbursement of board members' registration and travel expenses for any member who attends in or out of district meetings for the 2022, 2023 school year. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second, trustee Story. Comments or questions? Question, trustee Bishop?
I think there was some discussion about travel reimbursements, you know, in the past, and I just wanted some clarification. Board meetings are not reimbursable, correct? Travel expenses for board meetings? Right, that's what I agree, that's what I understood.
You get, you can get applied, not applied, but get mileage for committees, to go for committees for other board functions. You can get mileage for, if you don't bring a district vehicle, but it's encouraged to bring district vehicles to where we have them, if we, you know, if we have enough for our students and staff members to go that way. And it's like our meals that when we're at conferences, that will get reimbursed. We pay for it and then get reimbursed. But like the school district will pay for like the conference fees and the hotels associated it. It's the stuff out of pocket that we will get reimbursed for.
Can I add to that? So, tolls, parking, those are all things that are reimbursable. In terms of meals, the thing to keep in mind is that the business office cannot approve a reimbursement based on a credit card receipt that just has a total. We need to have an itemized meal receipt because as a school district, we are not allowed to reimburse for alcohol. There's no judgment about how you choose to dine, but when you submit for your meals, we will, we need to see each item listed and what you are seeking reimbursement for.
I appreciate the district not judging my choices. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. As per Commissioner's regulation, the Board of Education approves. The Board President is the Board of Education designee to approve impartial hearing officers in the absence of the Board President. The Board of Education approves, and I would suggest the Vice President, trustee Bishop, as a designee. Does anyone, may I have a first? Trustee Raimondo, second. Trustee Lynch. Comments, questions? All those in favor? Trustee Lynch, did you have a, okay. Was that unanimous? Did I have everyone? Yes, okay, thank you, that's unanimous. Item 16.10, donation for scholarships. The Superintendent recommends acceptance of donations totaling $9,800 in cash from various donors as scholarship awards for the graduating class. The Superintendent recommends approval of the following donations: $300 from Joan Mayo and Allison, $100 from Kristi Nelson Epstein, $100 from Andy Aki, $100 from Eric Pizzello, $100 from Jacob White Friedman, $100 from Brandon Harkin, $8,000 from the Bishop Foundation, $1,000 from John Soreich and Sally Rothschild. May I have a first? Trustee Wallace, second. Trustee Lynch, thank you. Comments, questions? No? Thanks to the athletic department and to everyone else who has contributed. We were so fortunate to have the support that we do from our community for our graduating students. The amount of awards and scholarships that were offered to our students this year was truly phenomenal for a school of our size. And I'm really proud of the way that the community constantly steps up for these kids. It's pretty awesome. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The Superintendent recommends acceptance of a grant donation totaling $500 in cash from Alliance Energy LLC, ExxonMobil Corporation, to support the Antioa Middle School, High School STEM program. The Superintendent recommends approval to increase the 2022, 2023 budget for the following donations that were received... donations that were received in June and deferred to be expended in the 22, 23 school year. May I have a first? Trustee Raimondo, second. Trustee Bishop. Questions, comments? All those in favor? So I've got five, five yes, one no? Or Sarah, did you want to abstain, or? Abstain. So abstention. Trustee Lynch. The code of conduct. The code of conduct shall be in effect for the 2022, 2023 school year. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Lynch. Comments, questions? Anyone? I would comment that this is a work in progress, um, and that the work will continue throughout the school year. There, we've discussed at length over the last couple of months, some work and some change that needs to go into the code of conduct, um, but we do need to keep it moving forward. So, the work will continue to be done, um, and discussed throughout the course of the year, and certainly after September. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. The Board of Education hereby approves the ICRs in items eighteen point zero two to eighteen point zero eight. May I have a first, please? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Bishop. Comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. The Board hereby approves item numbers nineteen point zero two to nineteen point zero six in the consent agenda. May I have a first, please? Trustee Bishop, second. Trustee Story. Comments or questions? Where is Schedule U? Schedule U?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Just trying to keep up with the agenda. I reviewed Schedule U, including the addendum that I received, and everything is in order. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bishop. Board District Clerk along those lines has, um, submitted a potential calendar for the review of CSE recommendations. My only, um, request was that we possibly switch myself and trustee Lynch to give trustee Lynch a little more time to get comfortable reviewing the Schedule U. I would suggest that all-
I'm just looking, October is a very busy month for, uh, program reviews. I, I would suggest we keep it the way it is, because September usually isn't a very big month for IEPs.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable taking a heavy month, I just wanted to give Sarah a little bit more time. I don't know that there's a way to- Okay, so, so Cindy can, and I would actually suggest that all new trustees take advantage of Ms. Bishop's incredible wealth of knowledge, um, when it comes to reviewing the CSE. This is a really important part of the work that we do, these, the CSE recommendations really need to be approved, and, and the process that they go, we have an incredible director of PPS, um, who does a fantastic job making sure that the children get what they need, and they can't get what they need until we approve them. So, um, this is, I think, a very important part of the work that we do. So I would certainly suggest that anyone who has questions about the role that they play in this, which is really fiduciary, um, work with Ms. Bishop to have their questions answered. Okay. May I have a first, second? First, trustee Story. Second, trustee Bishop. No comments, all in favor? Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. The Board will discuss old business. Does anyone have old business to discuss? Trustee Wallace?
Communications, uh, is that where communications, um, the potential hiring, a communications person, is, is that old business or considered new? Old business, so I think we should, should have a discussion about that. You know, what I, I, I'm not sure we, you know, we need a full-time person to, to do comms. What, given the size of, I mean, the fact that we, for instance, don't, you know, often have to deal with the press, um, in, in this school, very limited. And wondering if a part-time, uh, comms person who could, you know, help with, you know, some of the, you know, definitely increasing our outreach to parents and, and the community, which I think is something that we've talked about previously, is a goal, but, but I'm, I'm just not sure it's, it's something that, that needs a full-time person.
I think, um, what I would really like to do is have Holly Brooker, who is the Ulster Bosse's, um, Community Relations Supervisor, I'm not sure, I don't think that's her actual title, but she is the person who handles all of the communications staff that are assigned in districts, that we, we purchase a, a portion of a person. And so our person right now is Valerie Havas. She is going to be retiring this fall, and so we will need to, uh, revisit that anyway, but I think we could have, uh, the Communications Committee as a start, meet with Holly and talk about what services they do offer, because I believe she services, she may service every district in Ulster County right now. And she can talk to us about what is available through Bosse's. I know that they tend to hire, uh, a lot of the communications people from the private sector into, uh, Bosse's. And so we could start with that and see what they have to offer and what her suggestions might be, so that we know kind of what we're already purchasing and how, how or what we would like to supplement that with. And we also, um, I would also like to talk to her about initiating the rebranding, because we have the logo that had been worked on and approved, and we haven't rolled it out yet. So, uh, I think I'd like to bring her expertise in for that as well, to see how we go about rolling that out and getting it on all of the appropriate letterhead and propaganda, no, not propaganda. All of the appropriate public relations materials that we need to-
Can I edit you on that one?
Yes, please edit me. Sorry, it's late. So, but I would love, uh, when we get at the Communications Committee scheduled, get their meeting scheduled, I'd, I would love to bring Holly in and have her speak to everybody, because she is just really a wealth of knowledge, and she has a lot of resources, and she can, she can help us formulate a plan and, and kind of come to a decision on, you know, there are some districts who do have both in-house and Bosse's, and those two different people do different roles for the districts, but she would help us design that as well.
As I, as I may have mentioned, what would really be helpful is any communication that the board presents to the, our community should have a better set of eyes than certainly mine, or as I jokingly say, if you wanted a grammarian, hire a librarian. I'm not a, I'm terrible at grammar, uh, I feel bad about that, admittedly, but, um, it would be so great to have someone who we could rely on for communication, who is excellent at copy editing. And-
I would, I would, if, if my colleagues agree, I would love to have Holly speak to all of us. I would really enjoy, uh, not only did we graduate high school together, but I would also just really enjoy understanding exactly what Bosse's has to offer, and I think it's important for new board members to understand the relationship between Bosse's and the district, and to kind of understand what it means when we purchase services from Bosse's, and what that looks like. And, and you'll hear a lot more about Bosse's and the relationship between the district and Bosse's as we move through the year, but, but the work that the communications arm of Bosse's does is very important to the district, and if there's a way that we could all, I, I think we could all learn from that, um, and benefit from a better understanding of how that works. So maybe we could all meet with Holly, and then the Communications Committee could kind of jump off from there, after we have a chance to kind of hear from her.
The only other idea I mentioned was also requesting, um, support from the Talan staff. So I was curious if that was another option, or if we could invite them to this meeting, just to learn more about any ways they could be involved.
Yeah, I mean, that was something that I was thinking of when David was talking, was that maybe rather than looking for, um, a new hire, maybe there's someone within the district who has that skillset, who would be willing to work for a stipend, or, you know, that's certainly a conversation between, um, the union and the superintendent, and whether or not that is a possibility, but it would be something I would be interested in. I think we have an incredibly talented staff here, and I'm sure there's somebody with copy editing skill, um, and grammarian skill, um, much better than my own. So I'd, I'd be interested in that as well. We could use all the help that we can get with communications. Any other old business? New business?
On the break, I just penned another, uh, potential resolution for NISBA, and wondered if I could propose it here.
Yeah, please do.
Since we're, next meeting is in August 2nd. Okay, um, so there's actually, uh, and I can send you some of the articles, but there's actually some traction as of yesterday on, um, the idea of expanding, um, universal pre-K for ages three and four in the state, and so I think it is quite timely. I recognize this is, you know, I'm ten minutes into being a trustee, so I humbly request that you consider it, and we can just push for this over the next, you know, few years. But, um, as we talked about, you know, when there's the squeaky wheel, and there's already grease, maybe this, we should, we should go for it. So here's the verbiage, feel free to, uh, edit. Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association supports universal pre-K for ages three and four statewide. Rationale: We know that early education creates more equitable positive outcomes for all children. The average private preschool tuition in 2022 in the state of New York is $15,409 per year. Only 81 applicants this year received funding under the statewide universal full-day pre-K program.
Those are 81 students from Antiora, Sarah?
No, sorry, only 81 applicants, meaning just, uh, each, as I understand it, each year that district has to create, do an application for need, so that we receive grant funding to be able to, um, administer the current pre-K program. And for those of you who don't know, Cindy can tell you everything about it, but it was, um, essentially it's a lottery, and it's only for, um, age, children who are age four currently in Antiora School District.
Can I ask, do you by chance know 81 out of how many? Would maybe put context.
Thank you, I don't know, I will find out. I just did a quick, some quick research during our five-minute break, but I don't know the total number of applicants.
Sarah, I think that if you just add the word grant, applicants, you know, then it would be clear, 81 grant applicants.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm concerned about, I think it's a good idea, but the timing of throwing it together, because, um, these resolutions are, that, are, that we did were normally short, but a lot of these can be two and three pages long, and getting more, um, information, and that's the only thing that I'm concerned about, it being so short and not having enough information to do it, because I, I do, over the years, recall pre-K being something that has been, uh, discussed numerous times, and I just don't remember off the top of my head where we've, where NISBA has gone with them.
So I think this, um, you know, kind of leads to a larger question. What I hear trustee Story saying is that, um, perhaps it could be a much larger discussion on paper to present to NISBA, and what I hear trustee Lynch saying is that it's a, an issue that's of great importance in the state of New York, and, um, perhaps by putting forth a resolution, small or large, um, that we would open up a discussion that NISBA might be willing to undertake, um, and if nothing else, a discussion. So I'm curious how my colleagues feel about that, the difference between the two opinions.
I think that, um, starting a conversation is a really good idea, and even if it's short, um, you know, like trustee Lynch said, it's something we can build on over time, and just like, uh, trustee Salem, you know, he, he wasn't willing to give up that fight, so I, I mean, you know, we have to be in it for the long haul, and this is a good place to start.
Megan, do you have an opinion one way or the other?
I think that I agree with the concept of putting it forth, because at least you're planting the seed, and then that can lead, as you said, to larger discussion. But they don't know until they know, until we tell them.
Trustee Wallace?
Well, I agree with the sentiment and, uh, of, of the, uh, this particular resolution, and so I would say it's a bit of, I mean, even though it, sometimes it feels like it may be a hail mary, you throw the pass. So yes, I would, I would, I would throw the pass.
Trustee Story?
I'm, I'm asking, did anybody look at the NISBA resolution, uh, toolkit that was done? Because there's a lot of state, uh, steps that has to go through when we're doing, formulating the resolution and stuff like that. So that's where there's a lot of different regs and stuff that we have to go by when we're doing that. This is a seventeen-page document all about what, how we have to do.
Yeah, I actually, I did read it, actually, and I, um, didn't, just, um, request information from the, from Superintendent McLaren about a week and a half ago, because our own application was due June 30th. So I was, I would just had a question about how we could start this, and I reviewed that as well, and start this conversation and reviewed that as well. So, um, I take, take your point, I was just using the verbiage that we had for the other resolution, that's why I was, um, reading it in real time. But yes, I have seen that.
So Valerie, are you suggesting that there are parts, because I, I've read that document numerous times, Sarah, are you suggesting that there are parts of this that have not been fulfilled by?
I, I'm still reading, but I got into it, and where it said formulation, and then my computer has throw it-
Okay, well, why don't we, uh, why don't we continue on with new business, and give ourselves about five minutes to kind of think about this, and, and see where we all stand? I personally am, you know, would support certainly a resolution going to NISBA and asking them to take another look at supporting universal pre-K. I, I think it's vitally important, especially in rural districts like our own. It's, it's almost ludicrous that you, that of all of the districts in New York State, that only 81 were given the money that they need to, to do this. And especially now, coming out of COVID, I think that students could really benefit from a UPK program. So why don't we just revisit this, um, before we close the meeting?
I have a, one other piece of new business that I'd love to just throw out, to start a conversation on. And, uh, from what I understand, and I don't have, you know, the historical perspective that some of the other trustees do, um, that there was at one point a study done about the efficacy of solar energy, um, on this campus, and that it was determined at the time, and again, I'm not, I, I'm not fact-checking, so, um, that it was, that the, the, it was too heavy for the, the roof. Now, in the subsequent dozen years, I'd love to know if- for the roof. Now, in the subsequent dozen years, I'd love to know if technology has changed, and that there are other options to lower our energy costs by investing now in renewables. I'd love, I'd love to know where that conversation, you know, if there's any, anyone who has, you know, a real institutional memory about what was done and could, could speak to that, and if we could explore, which would, you know, in a perfect world, might save, on the long term, us a lot of money, given the electricity costs right now.
I feel like maybe that's an RFI for us to go back and try and find, and this was work that the Facilities Committee had done, and it might be work that the Facilities Committee might pick up or revisit to try and bring us up to speed, because I think it had to do with the roof warranty as well as the, the panels being on the roof, and whether there was anywhere else that they could be situated, but we don't, we didn't have the right area. At one point in the county, there was talk of whether school districts would join a consortium and literally rent land to put solar panels on and do it as a joint venture, and that didn't end up being viable either. But I, there was definitely, there was definitely analysis done on, on whether solar energy would be viable, and at that point, it wasn't. But we could go back and try and find the actual documentation. And then, Trustee Story is, I'm wondering if you're remembering that Facilities did that work?
They did, and I was talking with Trustee Wallace early, a couple of days ago, and that's, but that was even prior to me coming on the Board. That was me getting information from former trustees, so that's how...
It was a long time ago, so I'm not sure it's necessarily relevant.
And it very well may be, but, you know, we also should explore if technology has advanced so much, maybe with, you know, heat air pumps, or, you know, there's so much going on. It would be great to know, to sort of take a sort of State of the Union and know what our, if our options have changed. And then I had also heard that there was foundation money for, this is unrelated, that there are certain organizations, nonprofit organizations, and foundations that will fund school costs of renewable systems, that there, there might be worth hunting some, some foundation money for it.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great, if we can figure out who might be funding that. But I think to talk about the analysis of it is a great Facilities Committee.
So David, would you like to submit a, an RFI to the superintendent? We can do it verbally now, or if you want to take some time, you can do it in writing, whatever you prefer?
I would love to do it verbally now. I'd love to, does that have to be voted on, or just, I would request information on this, the both, the state of our previous, the Board, the district's previous discussions regarding the implementation of renewables, including solar, and any information that you have would be, would be great when you can. It's...
Any other new business? I'm, this may be old business, but I'm going to bring it up as new business, because Superintendent McLaren was not with us when we had this discussion. Last year, we had a discussion regarding the handling of hall passes in various classrooms to ensure that they were not indicating what kind of service that the child was going for. And I just want to reiterate it, discuss it a little bit if we need to, but I think it's really important, especially bringing Aster into the picture, and the possibility of offering more mental health services to our students and families. I think it's really important that the children, whether they're in kindergarten or in 12th grade, are not identified, it's not identified as to why they're leaving the classroom. I think it speaks to, you know, their own mental health, their safety, and their safety with their peers. And unfortunately, sometimes their safety in the classroom in general. So I just wanted to, to bring that up, because Superintendent McLaren was not here last year when we talked about it, as just kind of reiterating, and if anyone had any concerns about that, but that was something that we discussed last year, and I think it's vitally important. I want to make sure that kids who have permission to leave the classroom have permission to leave the classroom without having to identify why.
I'd love to, I'd love to know what the school psychologist thinks about whether it, in some ways, stigmatizes it further by, you know, if we're more open, more transparent, if, if in some ways, we're, we're taking a step to destigmatize. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we had some examples last year of it actually being stigmatizing. So there were examples last year of children knowing why other children were leaving the classroom and using that information against them in some way that that child and their families perceived as harmful. So I don't, I, in my opinion, it's a privacy issue. There is no reason for anyone other than that child and their parents and, you know, the CSE potentially to understand why a child is leaving the classroom for services that they require. So for me, I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this district and across the country regarding stigmatization of mental health, but I don't want it to come at the sacrifice of an individual child. That would be my position. Anyone else? New business? Anybody? No? Any other RFI's request for information? Okay, all right. Next, go ahead, Valerie. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna just take a second to revisit Sarah's NISBA resolution. Do you want to read it again for us, Sarah?
Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support universal pre-K for ages three and four statewide. Rationale, we know that early education creates more equitable positive outcomes for all children. Currently, the average private preschool tuition in New York is $15,409 per year in 2022. Only 81 grant applicants will receive funding under the current statewide universal full-day pre-K program.
Do we want to take a vote on whether or not we want to? Go ahead.
I got a question. Where did you get that number of 81?
I just forwarded it to your emails. It was in an article.
I'm wary of putting numbers. Normally, we get that information from SED, would be the ones that we would come out and say, that's how many, the State Education Department would come out and say that. I don't know.
Sarah, do you have a source there that we could include in the resolution? So if you could add in the source information?
Nick Reisman, Spectrum News One.
So just according to Spectrum News One, comma, that would, that would...
That's okay.
I think suffice.
Okay.
So now you have, you have your source.
Great.
I mean...
Yeah, presumably, they got that information from SED. And I would just say that next year, when, when our Board is not so new, that we'll each take some time with this. You guys did not have access to this information prior to a couple of days ago, and the timing is, is really intense from NISBA. I wish that they did not structure it this way, because there are new board members coming in all over New York State, and maybe that's a resolution that we can do next year as well. But for right now, I'd like to take a vote and see if we would like Sarah's resolution to go forward to NISBA. All in favor? Valerie, do you have a question?
No, I voted.
I know, but it looked like you were raising your hand. Okay. Megan, did you vote? I'm sorry. Yes, okay. So that's unanimous. District Clerk, if you could get that information from Trustee Lynch and include that with our resolution. Any other questions? Okay, our next meeting is August 2nd, 2022, in the Middle School, High School Auditorium. We're right back here. May I have a first to adjourn? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Wallace. All in favor?